Gone once, gone twice, okay, moving on. Next item of business is the consent agenda items. You see items A through F before you, and I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So may I?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Florley, any discussion? Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, the consent agenda is adopted. We have recognition of difference makers. Dr. Linsky.
Yes, I would like to come an overview picture. I would like Brenda Hatfield, our Director of Quality Improvement, to kind of give an overview, but the bottom line is, we have 1,478 difference makers in our difference every day with our full and part-time employees and start recognizing them as we are all stronger together. And so Brenda, if you could kind of give an overview of this, something we're doing here on a regular monthly basis now.
Wonderful. So back in September, we did a staff survey to ask staff how they wanted to be recognized. We decided we wanted to hear from them, and we heard from them, and here's what they told us. They wanted to hear from parents, they wanted to hear from students, and they wanted to hear from coworkers. That was the most meaningful type of difference or type of recognition that we could give them. So we created the difference maker, and we're going to bring some of them to you every single month, and they're going to be tied to either partnership, learning, or stewardship. But to date, since November 1st, I have received over 50 different separate individual nominations, either from parents, students, or coworkers recognizing somebody in the district. And it is some amazing stories about how people really do work hard every single day to make a difference in the lives of kiddos. I will tell you that so far about 40% of those have come from families, either the parents or the students, and 60% of them are coming from our coworkers. So we're excited to talk to you today about three difference makers and let you meet some of our folks.
Sounds great. Thank you. So starting out at Nichols Career Center, Sharon Longdon, the Director of Nichols Career Center, if you would come forward and just share a little bit, I'm going to introduce them to, and she's going to give an overview of how they are working together through a partnership, through our instructors. We have Kenny Thomas, our welding instructor, welding teacher at Nichols Career Center. And we have Matt Jaeger, our mechatronics teacher at Nichols Career Center.
First of all, thank you, members of the board, for having us here tonight, and for recognizing two of my instructors at Nichols Career Center that work hard every single day in the lives of our students and for our families. Kenny, as was mentioned, is our welding instructor, and Matt is our mechatronics instructor. One thing that they are doing really well in regards to our pillars of leadership is the partnership that they have. We partner together all the time at the Career Center, but this is one in particular where not only the partnership, but the stewardship is there as well as the learning. Kenny's program, the welding program, we wrote for through enhancement grant to get a new plasma cutter, received that, so 75% of that comes back to the district when you write through enhancement. That's a very technical piece of equipment that Kenny might have been a little bit nervous about. His students were a little nervous about knowing how to run it, knowing how to operate it, how to program it. That's where Matt comes in with his students, and his students have come down to the welding program to help partner with the welding kids, teaching them how to use the equipment, and it's really, interestingly enough, the teachers can kind of step back and the students can take over. So that's how that partnership has to look. So learning is taking place, obviously, stewardship and partnership, so all three. So Kenny and Matt, thank you very much for everything you do for our kids every single day. Proud of you.
Thank you.
And they have a little token.
Absolutely, that'd be awesome.
This is a result of our plasma cutter.
They have some short points, so be careful.
Thank you very much.
That is awesome.
That's awesome, thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
To help Kenny's students learn how to use this piece of equipment, he is doing a fundraising event where the proceeds are going to Toys for Tots. So the kids are getting to learn how to use the plasma cutter, making some different things, and selling them to staff and such, and then the proceeds of that are taking care of paying for the metal, but then the other parts going to Toys for Tots, so also giving back to our community.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Good picture. Matt, stay here.
Do you want one of these in the picture?
Well, that'd be awesome. How long it would take me to do.
For sale.
My only Christmas decoration I put up this year.
Thank you.
And thank you for the archway, it's beautiful by the way, to the walkway that you all did. It's absolutely gorgeous.
Okay, next, we have Stephanie Johnson, Executive Director of Boys and Girls Club, and Todd Schalls, Principal at Callaway Hills. They have a great partnership, and as we talk about being stronger together, excited that they could join us tonight. We'd like to recognize them as well. Todd, if you would come, give a quick overview of what that partnership looks like. Todd is our Principal at Callaway Hills, and Steph, if you could talk about the partnership that you guys have with the Boys and Girls Club.
So Todd Schalls, Principal at Callaway Hills, we're super excited to be partnering with the Boys and Girls Club. There was a grant written, a 21st Century Grant, and Teresa back there, oh, she's up here now, made sure that all the, you know, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and so this grant was able to go through, and we're super excited to offer this for our kids. It's going to mean that we have an after-school program on that side of the River River to the Callaway Hills students. A lot of some things that are going to happen there is homework time, also tutoring time for our kids out there, as well as STEAM. We have teachers that are going to come in, and they're going to teach different things with engineering, or mathematics, or the arts, anything that's related to STEAM for the kids each night. They're also going to get a meal, and then for those that may need, we're also going to have transportation for some of our kids to get home, so we're super excited to offer this for our kids, much needed program. So thank you very much for what you're doing to help us out, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Todd. And in addition to the new after-school program in Callaway Hills, we are bringing a STEM program to our new Boys and Girls Club facility that will be able to really enrich and enhance the program we're doing with our elementary children. And Teresa did a wonderful job writing this grant of $1.5 million that we will get over five years, so it's incredible. And we're able to provide all these services to kids at no cost with that grant.
That's great.
All circle. Here we go. So we got him out of his picture here, so.
Okay, guys, look right here. One, two.
There we go. Thank you.
And the last recognition we have scheduled for this evening is Coach Jim Marshall. Coach, would you come to the podium? I have the honor to introduce Coach Marshall this evening. When I asked him how he'd like for me to introduce him this evening, he said, you know, just an old Jaybird and a teacher of 25 years. And I think anybody that knows Coach Marshall and knows his history with the school district knows that he's a lot more than just an old coach and Jaybird of 25 years. But he said, you're in your 38th year of education at Wayne Woods currently, right?
Yes.
That's good. So we wanted to recognize Coach Marshall this evening for his work in substance abuse prevention with our students. Recently, he's spoken to both of our middle schools here at Jeff City, and he's also spoken to a number of schools in the central Missouri area, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So I know you devote a tremendous amount of your personal time to be able to bring a very powerful, very moving message, and so not only did we want to recognize him this evening, but after we do the recognition, we asked, I asked him if he would share some information with us this evening, so we'll give Coach the floor, and look forward to hearing his comments.
Okay. Great, welcome now.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to the board. I think everybody knows a little bit of background about my tragedy and my son, and my passion for trying to help kids going through struggles in this scenario. I could go on for a couple of hours on this, it's such a big issue to me. Let me just kind of give a little bit of background on the hurricane that we're in right now. It's kind of what I describe substance abuse right now in our country. We have a young person dying every eight minutes in this country of an overdose. This is the number-one accidental death scenario by far, and way above traffic fatalities now. For every eight overdoses, there are two or three that just missed nine, survived their overdose, and will never know about, and there were two or three trying for the first time. Our children are at risk. One out of five 12-year-olds knows where to get heroin, and yes, here in Jeff City, I have plenty of parents call me to come talk to their kids, and the first thing I ask is where are they getting this? And I'm not here to bash any school district or any scenario. It's here in every town, every community, every school district, and we've got an epidemic, and we need to address it. Our kids are struggling. We have a lot more kids that are suffering from anxiety and depression than when we grew up. Any of us that have kind of fallen back on that old, well, you didn't have to walk two days, you know, to school two miles, and you didn't have to walk through snow like I did, kids have it 10 times worse than we do. This is the post-9/11 generation. They've grown up with terrorist acts, mass killings, the cell phones taking them away from engaging with their peers and with their parents. They easily become stressed, they have poor coping skills because of how we're raising them. I really attack the parents when I talk on this issue. We're not letting our kids fail on their own, we're not letting them problem solve, we're not letting them come up with their own situations to get out of the trouble they're in. We love our kids dearly, we do this out of the love that we have for them, but we're raising a generation of youth that have very poor coping skills. They quit things when it's tough, they run to self-medication when problems such as anxiety and depression are available, and we're seeing it at a higher level. I work at a university, I talk to the people in the wellness center, they've said they've seen their numbers skyrocket with the number of kids that come in saying that they're suffering from anxiety, suffering from depression. One out of five college kids will take a prescription pill before they graduate that is not prescribed to them. Our kids think that a pill is the answer to everything right now. We're a pill-num culture. I taught at the middle schools, I saw the rock star in Thomas Jefferson, Tracy Frank, have to give medicine to half the kids at lunchtime. Our kids and our doctors in medical field, we've kind of failed ourselves in thinking that the pill can solve everything. And our kids are quick to take a Xanax when they're stressed out, and they get it in the locker room, and they get it in the library, and they get it outside of school. And if you're thinking the answer is step up the number of SROs, or step up the number of policemen, you can't stop it in a prison, you're not going to stop it in a high school. We need to think of more programs to teach our kids how to deal with anxiety at the middle school level. We need to have more programs to teach them what depression is and how to handle it. We need more classes that teach them how to prevent themselves from falling into this trap. I'm not saying that any school district has failed in trying to do something positive in this way. I'm saying for the size of the problem that we have, we're not doing enough. We're not doing enough to teach kids how to walk around the hurricane, and how to deal with their emotional issues, and how to solve those problems. A class in substance abuse or mental health issues would help at the middle school level. Mental health specialist, how many do we have per building? Talk to middle school principals, they see 100 fires they have to put out in terms of anxiety and depression and suicide attempts every week. Our counselors can't handle that number. I think the first thing we need to do is understand how bad it is. Parents have no idea. I didn't know about this system and situation before it happened to me. We need parent education. I'm getting called more and more to go to school districts around the state and say, Coach, can you talk to our parents? They don't know how they're contributing to raising kids without coping skills, and they don't know the signs of substance abuse. And many of us, as parents, myself included, were the parents that said, this can't happen to me. Worst thing you can say as a parent, it can't happen to me. Your children will get offered these substances, and they will walk through the valley of depression, and they will walk through the valley of anxiety we all have and we all will, as I tell kids. Life starts kicking in the gut the day you're born, and it ends the day you die, you better have strong coping skills to deal with it in the meantime. I encourage this board and this system to start evaluating how you can help educate children, those one in five that know where to get heroin at age 12, but don't know what heroin is and don't know what heroin does. Don't go looking to get help from the medical field, because when you take your kid in like I did, they're going to cite him with depression and give him another bottle of pills. Yes, here in town, we gave a Xanax addict another bottle of Zoloft on top of his addiction. We don't drug test before we have kids with mental health issues. We need to start educating kids, educating parents, bring the parents in during registration, let them listen to a substance abuse talk, get them on board and get them educated. Too many of them think that 4.0 and 32 ACT and the captain on the football team is immune to this. And yes, I've gone to the funeral of one of those who came from a great background. This is not discrimination here, this drug abuse. It's not really playing a demographic game. It's not the kid on the wrong side of the tracks like we've stereotyped it. It's not the kid that cusses a teacher out, it's not the kid that skips school. I'm telling you, it is cut across just on the higher level of socioeconomics as it is the lower. West County and Baldwin and Manchester and Chesterfield have the highest number of overdoses, where it takes you a million dollars to buy a lot before you build a house. Please do not think that our system is devoid or absent from this scenario, this problem. I call the ambulance companies every year, I find out the numbers. We had 170 overdose calls last year in this county. Columbia had 378. That's one a day. Most of these kids are 18 to 25 years old. I will pat my Columbia brothers on the back, because today they just accepted that all their administrators in every building will carry naloxone so that they could administer it when some of their children are overdosing. That's how bad the problem is, that our schools are now adopting naloxone to be administered by their administrators in buildings. Let's get on board, let's be proactive in this issue, and maybe we can save some kids down the road from going through this struggle. I know we're all concerned about social studies, and English, and health, and history. I'm going to tell you what, my child, the MAP score doesn't matter right now. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very somber and informative, gives us a lot to think about. Appreciate his time this evening. Onto reports in communications. First item under that section of the agenda is Chief of Learning update from Dr. Brian
Okay, last month, when I was here, we started talking a little bit about some school discipline data, and I want to bring you some information tonight. Basically, what I want to share with you is kind of the status of where we're at, data, look at some facts, and then start talking about potential where we go from here, and so you should have in front of you a copy of the presentation that I am going to walk you through here. So what I want to do is share some data with you, and I just want to share some of the information that I've gleaned from the numbers. The majority of what I'm going to show you is obviously from the start of this school year until now, so the first quarter of school as to where we're at. We'll do a little bit of comparison as to what that looks like in comparison to last year, but primarily where we're at today. So you have in front of you the first slide, first data slide, which is a prior year to current year comparison, and so it compares last year's first quarter to the current year first quarter. That's what those first two columns are, and then it shows you a difference, and you'll notice that we have about five schools that showed a decrease in the number of office referrals, and 11 that showed an increase. And I'll tell you that these numbers are not suspensions from school, these are office referrals. So a child was referred to the office for some reason, that's what these numbers are. You'll notice that in the first quarter last year, there was 2,099, and this first quarter there were 3,044, which was a change of 945 office referrals. And so I want to address a couple of things, because that seems like a lot. I'll remind you of a couple of things, that we worked very hard all last year. We developed a code of conduct through the behavior team. We developed a code of conduct for the reason of hoping that we could get ourselves to be more uniform across this district in terms of the consequences that we were having for discipline. We also, at the start of this year, began looking at how consistent we were across the district with what was getting entered into Infinite Campus, into the system. In other words, we had some principals that were logging a lot of discipline that other principals were choosing not to log, and so we had to, before we could start talking about these numbers, and as we've told you, we needed to ensure that we are getting at least a lot closer to being consistent with what was being logged school by school if we're going to compare those, and that's what you have in front of you, our school. So I can tell you that today I believe that we're a lot closer to being consistent with what is getting logged and what is not getting logged, and so I think with that, we're ready to. But the other piece of that is that Dr. Lithgow has said numerous times that when he came here, what he heard from the staff was that one of the largest barrier for teaching and learning was student behaviors. And we began saying that we're going to take it serious, and we're going to hold kids accountable. Well, some of these numbers are because we've decided that we are going to hold more kids accountable, and some of these numbers are because we are now logging them differently. We have some principals that weren't logging everything, now they are. And so the 945 is a combination of several things, not necessarily that we have a lot more disruption in the building. Possibly we do, but I just wanted to point out that there are a couple other factors. On the second slide that you have, this is the event count by school, and so you can see that by school, the number of times that a child was sent to the office is the count of event. The number of offender is how many children actually were sent to the office representing that number. So for example, at Bel Air, there were 82 times that children were sent to the office, and that was represented by 24 students. So of the 3,000 incidences we're talking about, it was represented by 1,300 students who were actually sent to the office. I gave you also the total enrollment of the buildings and the free reduced lunch count. And when I got to looking at that, 1,300 offenders being sent to the office represent about 15% of our student population. So about 15% of our student population made a visit to the office for some reason, and we'll talk about those reasons here in just a minute. You'll also notice that when it comes to the secondary schools, they have more, their count of events is much higher. Well, that is because their schools obviously are much larger, and they have more kids, and so that one makes sense. You'll also notice that if you look at, Coach just spoke to you, and it was a good segue into this, but if you look at the two middle schools, if you look at Lewis and Clark and Thomas Jefferson, you'll see that those two schools, just our middle schools alone, represent 1,100, of the count of events, represent 1,100 of those events. And so that, our middle schools represent about 22% of our total population, so 22% of our population is really causing about 40% of our actual office referrals, and I think that lends itself to the conversation that you just heard, part of those issues. In addition to that, if you do the actual student offender count from the two middle schools, it comes out to 437 students. So 437 middle schoolers represented 1,100 office visits, while 437 middle schoolers represents about 5% of our total population. So 5% of our total population caused 40% of our office referrals, so a very small population causing them. I just think that's an important point to make. However, when you move to the elementary schools, it changes. It's no longer an issue of the largest schools have the largest count of events. You'll notice our larger schools like Bel Air and North, and Lawson, larger schools do not have the larger offender counts. Instead, what you'll find if you spend time looking at that is that there's a correlation between the free and reduced percentage, the last column, and the count of events. So the higher your free and reduced rate is at the school, the higher your event count, the more students that are sent to the office. There's a correlation. So you'll see that in schools like Callaway East, West, Morale Heights, higher free and reduced rates and higher count of events. The exception to that rule is Thorpe Gordon. Thorpe Gordon is a very high free and reduced school, but the event count is low. But outside of Thorpe Gordon, that rule applies to free and reduce.
Could I maybe interject there? Of the last year with the boundary line changes from Morale Heights and East and Thorpe Gordon, the school that was impacted the most as far as gaining the number of students was Thorpe Gordon.
Yes.
As I shared earlier, our smallest elementary schools, East Elementary, Morale Heights, I think went up 18 students, it was at the time, maybe it's fluctuated now, but it was impacted the most with the increase in the number of students at Thorpe Gordon. So whether it's an outlier, a variety of reasons, and looking at what they're doing, what's working, what's not, but just an interesting point there that I thought would add.
Yeah, to add to that, we also learned this, that Morale Heights did not receive the bulk of East students in the boundary changes themselves, that they were slated to go to Thorpe Gordon. However, Morale Heights saw a huge turnover in students, so a lot left, and students moved in from surrounding schools like South and Thorpe and East. In fact, they had 25%, a fourth of their student turned over from last year to this year, so 25% of their students are new to their school.
And am I just, part of that, we think, is, you know, different expectations from building to building, and that consistency is, Dr. Shindore touched on, of what's being reported and what's not, of what is expected, that we think that is one of the contributing factors toward that.
If you go to the next slide, what this shows you then is, so what are our students doing to get to the office? So these are the events, the types of behaviors that are getting our students to the office. And I'll point out a couple of things. One of the 3,000 events, a fourth of those, about 27% of those, are what I would categorize as being non-significant in terms of they didn't cause harm or danger to others. So they are things like misbehaving on the bus, they were truant, they were tardy, it was a failure to show up to their after-school detention, those types of things. So a fourth of those were from those types of behavior. But let's look at the more serious ones. So if you were to look at the rest of the offenses, when you look at the ones that we would consider to be pretty darn serious, things like assault, bullying, weapons, drugs, and alcohol, fighting, those represented, there are about 220 events of the 3,000, which is about 7%. So about 7% of our offenses were ones that I would categorize as being pretty darn serious, and they were assaulting, they were fighting, there were drugs involved. I point that out only because I think that we have a lot of, we have some individuals that believe that our schools, that this is happening a lot more, the fighting and the assault, that schools are out of control. And I think that it, I just want to point out that those very serious offenses are limited. In fact, 90, almost 90% of the reasons that kids get sent to the office come down to five things. Five reasons are 90% on that board right there, and they are. And I'll put them in order of percent. Disruptive conduct and speech is the number-one reason. Second, misbehavior on the bus. Third, physical contact. Fourth is disrespect to staff, and the fifth one is being truant or tardy. So those are the five top reasons, and make up 90% of that 3,044. If you go to the next slide, this is then last year, so compared to what I just showed you this year, this is what took place the first quarter, and what you'll see is that the exact same, the data looks exactly the same, other than there than there were fewer office referrals. It is the exact same five that make up the majority of the referrals that took place last year. Disruptive conduct, bus, physical contact, disrespect, and truancy tardy. They are the same ones. And in fact, I'll tell you that I went back and looked at the last five years, and those five were the same top five for the last five years. And so this is just a visual of last year and this year, and you can see that they exactly mirror each other for those five types of offenses. Yes?
Dr. Shindor, what is the difference between fighting and physical contact aggression?
So, physical contact could be that you trip somebody, that you grabbed their arm, that you held their hair, as opposed to it turned into a full gun, we're punching each other in the face. And so that's typically the difference between, I physically made contact with you, I touched you, compared to we got into a altercation, a fight.
Okay. But that also, some buildings may view that as...
Absolutely.
You know, it turned into a fight, well, did it get, you know, how was it reported? We're still, it's not perfect, but trying to get consistency.
And so that's still, we realize that it's still not a perfect system, but we believe we're a lot closer. But we still have work to do to make sure that we're having conversations as a leadership team to say, let's give examples of things that we're, that we are identifying as being a fight or an assault or a physical aggression, those types of things. We still need to get better, but I believe we're closer. Okay? So what happens to them when they come to us? They commit the offense and they come to the office. This, the next chart shows you then what it is that we are doing with the students when they get to us. And so you'll notice that of the, of the 3,000 times that students showed up, out-of-school suspension, if you'll notice there, about three-quarters of the way down, represented 341 of the 3,000, so about 10%. The majority of times, it was in-school suspension or a conference with the student or the parent. That makes up the majority of what the consequence was. And so I point that out because I, you know, we have, we have people on both sides of the fence. Some people would say that we, that, that student behaviors are not taken serious enough and we're not holding them accountable and suspending them from school. Then we have others who would say, you're constantly kicking kids out of school, you're constantly kicking them, all you want to do is kick them out. So you can see there that out-of-school suspension really only represents about 10% of the time. All others were, and guys, the reason that that is is because we don't get a lot of, we don't get a lot of bang for our buck when kids go home and sit for five days. They're going to come back. We would rather that we conference or educate or spend time with them and continue to educate them and move forward, as opposed to just say, go home and come back, we're hoping that things are going to be better. And so in a time when our attendance is criticized, that we, that we can't get kids in school, the last thing we want to do is that attendance to be bad solely because we're constantly making them stay at home. And so we're very cautious about in situations when it's serious, a serious offense and there's a cause to be concerned, absolutely, there's going to be an out-of-school suspension. When we believe we can take this as be a learning opportunity, that's what we're going to do. So those are the, what we're doing with the kids when they, when they come to the office.
Dr. Shindor?
Yes.
Is the suspended student classroom where you remove a child just from one class versus an in-school suspension, is like they're out of all of their classes for the day? What's the difference between those two?
The high school suspension classroom?
Well, I don't know. What does suspended student classroom mean, the very bottom line?
So we have the, at the high school level, we have the suspended classroom. So if a child is to be suspended from school, and it's typically going to be a, more than likely, it could be an out-of-school suspension, rather than say, we want you to spend five or 10 days at home, we're going to take the opportunity to put you in this, in the suspension classroom and have the opportunity to continue to educate you onsite and get attendance, as opposed to saying, just go sit at home.
How is that different than in-school suspension?
In-school, well, the out-of-school, the suspension room is off-site. It is not, because typically, if you're suspended from school, you've committed something serious and we don't necessarily want you onsite. In-school suspension could be part of a day where the suspension room is usually a day, at least full day, and usually multiple days, where the in-school suspension could be partial.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, how does the after-school detention and when you talk about bus suspension, if, how does that work? And if you're suspended off the bus, what is the correlation between that child, our kids that are suspended, and attendance?
That's one of our issues. So depending on the, the school, the site, oftentimes, if we suspend a child from the bus for a misbehavior on the bus, and that does happen, there are quite often that they just don't come to school because they don't have transportation to get them.
It really is an out-of-school suspension.
For some students, it really is.
And how does the after-school detention work? Because if they're catching a bus, what about after-school detention? How does that correlate with those that are actually attending after-school detention versus that do, how does that end getting home, providing transportation?
Typically, that is a, a student or parent responsibility if you're going to be kept afterwards. We don't typically have buses who are waiting for suspended students or detention students. Yeah. Which is why you'll see that, well, one of the data that I showed you there was that not showing up for your consequences becomes a consequence, is because we have students who don't stay for detention. And sometimes they don't stay for detention because they realize, I don't have, I'm not going to have the transportation to get home. And so I got to weigh, I've got to weigh the consequences of another consequence compared to...
Right, getting home.
Getting home.
So it really, it's a, it's a catch-22.
It is.
And geographically, we're so large, there's no way you could expect a student to walk to many areas of our district, and certainly in public transportation to many areas of our district as well.
And it is a fine line. I'll just touch that riding the bus is a privilege, not a right. And what that looks like of having accountability, asking the bus drivers to greet every student every day, learn their names, clear expectations, follow through, it all sounds good. You might say, David, it sounds so good. The concept of making that a reality and how we work through that while still having, it's an extension of the classroom. We believe it's a school district, and it's a delicate line, folks, and it's not perfect, and we need to improve that.
Maybe not get in trouble.
So the, the next slide that you have then shows of the 3,000 incidences, it breaks it out by race. And so the columns that I've given you here are the, the count event for, to make up the 3,000. You then have the discipline percent for that race. You also have the enrollment population to do comparison, and the count of offenders. And so for, if we take it as an example, the first column of Asian, there were 16 times when they showed up at the office. That is 0.53% of the total, 100% of the 3,000 events. The Asian population is 1.7 of our total student population, and that was conducted by seven offenders. And so the, probably the biggest ones on there in this data is that black makes up 40% of the discipline referrals, and white makes up 42%. Obviously disproportionate with our student body, but those are the two, black and whites. The others are...
I have a question. At the diversity meetings, Larry, you talked about a disproportionality discipline report that is going to DSS. Is that with this data?
Yes, and I'm going to talk about that in about two slides here. Yep.
Okay. And can you elaborate on what's...
I will, if you'll let, I have it, I have it coming up here in a couple of slides, and I'll explain what we're doing there. So this is by, by race. And so one thing that I want to share with you is, at some point, we have to come up with solutions. And so one of the things I've been looking at is this chart here. What this chart shows you is the orange line represents your district in terms of the free and reduced rate from 2012 to last year. And you'll see that there is a steady incline from just under 50% to close to 60, where we are today. The blue line represents the number of discipline resolutions. So the number of times that kids showed up at the office and there was a resolution. You'll see that from '12 to '13, there was a significant drop. I can't explain that, but you'll see that from '13 till today, there's been a steady incline. And those two lines, in my mind, kind of work together. And so as we see that our free and reduced rate continues to climb, it may be cause to wonder if that part of the reason we also have an incline in the number of office referrals. Because if you look historically over the last five years of office referrals, it continues to, we're getting more and more students who show up at the office. Regardless of race, reason, consequences, we have more students showing up at the office. And so we've got to begin to question, why is that? What are the causes? Part of that, I think we heard from, we heard from Coach, part of those reasons. I'm simply trying to look at what are other potential reasons. So it's not on this chart, but...
Before we get to the next slide, one thing I think is demographics of our community. I know my first year teaching was '95, '96 here in Jefferson City. And I left, and then I came back, and folks said, Larry, it's different than it was 20 years ago, 22 years ago. Our demographic, our free and reduced, our poverty level, I believe, was 23%.
26.
26% in '96. '96, okay? So we could talk about the line here, if we came back here to '96, to here, you can see, we were here in '12, ballpark 50%. Between '58 and '59 now, but it's continued more than double. And so we, it's a poverty in the, looking at how learning for the, for our kids, our children that grew up in poverty, on how it's different as we work through this, that our demographics have changed with that.
Yeah. In 1996, a quarter of the students, a fourth of the students showed up from impoverished homes, whereas today we're, I would argue that we're above 60%. And I'd argue that because what we know is that high school students typically don't report, because in order to be counted as free and reduced, you have to fill out a form that's, that shows income of the family. And what we know is that high school students don't always do that. And so we can verify 60, I would propose that we're likely higher than that, 62. But what, what it does show, if you look at the history from 1996, from the 20s, the 26% that you're referencing, every year on average, we gained 2% free and reduce. So since 1996, we have gained 2% every year to where we are today. And when you compare that to the state of Missouri, the state of Missouri has only gained about 10% over that time period. In fact, what happened in Jeff City is that in, we were, in '96, we were actually, well, we were below the state average, we were about 5% or 6% below. In, in 2008, we caught up with the, with the state average. We met them. And then in 2011, we surpassed the state average, because we continue to grow 2% and the state doesn't. And so I believe today, I could be wrong, but I believe, Jason, the state is still at about 50%. Roughly about 50%, and we are at least 60, probably 62%. The concerning piece of that is that that 2% trend line has not deviated whatsoever since, in the last 20 years. And so you have to assume that it is going to continue next year and the year after. And so by that rate, in the next six or seven years, we would, we could easily be at the 75 percentile of free and reduced. And if you know anything about federal money, federal money, when it comes to your school district, they require that when you get above 75% free and reduced rate, you begin, you are then required to service those buildings, because they see that as a significant issue of having 75% free and reduce. We are knocking on that door, folks. We're, we're six or seven years away if something doesn't change, if it, if this trend continues. Okay, so let's get to Pam's question here. So I want to provide this slide to you, you have it, I won't spend a lot of time, but this right here shows you all of the services, the personnel, the programming that we currently have in place. A lot of this was put in place over the last couple of years, but you can see the resources that we have available. It shares with you that at the elementary level, the services we have, but we also use the PBIS, PBS, school-wide student management is what our elementary schools use. And then when we get to the middle school, they use the BIST, which is their system of support for addressing behaviors. And so we have supports in place. The question is then, are we, are we using those people and programs to the best of our ability, or do we need to begin looking at how we're using those? And that's what my last slide is, is so what do we do? So I'm, we are going to continue to review our code of conduct, which is our administrative procedures for how do we handle, for consistency, the consequences for students who are sent to the office. I believe we need to audit our personnel in terms of that slide that I just shared with you. I think we need to look at, are we, is it make, having impact, a positive impact? And if not, what do we need to change or make different? The disproportionate review is what you're referring to. So the State Department has sent, noticed that our, we're disproportionate in the number of black students with an IEP, so special education students that are black, compared to the non-black special education students. And so we're going through the process right now of doing a review to identify if that, if, why we have that disproportionate data. And so we do that by pulling the discipline reports and the IEPs on those students, and we'll share those with the State Departments. We'll start having conversations about, are we appropriate and, and is there equity across the board for the office referrals and the consequences that we administer? So we're going through that process now of the disproportionate review. So does that answer your question, or do you want to know more about that? It's a pretty extensive process. It's, the State Department is involved, and they work with us in terms of asking us for certain data. They sit down and we go over that data. If they need more, we share with us. So it's a, it's a review process that we go through with DSS.
Okay. I wanted to also ask you about the PBIS. There are different stages to that, different levels?
Yes.
Are we making, at each of the elementary schools we're implementing, are we making progress, or are we stuck in certain stages in certain buildings? How is that going?
Good question. So part of the issue that I have with, with that process is that a lot of the, whether or not you go from a Level 1 to a Level 2 or Level 3, oftentimes is based on the reporting that's coming from, from within the school. And so one of the things we're looking at is working with the folks from, from AZU to come in and do observations for us, to spend time looking at classrooms, to see if we're actually, we do have the procedures in place, do we have all the protocol that we're supposed to, are we actually using the language? Do we have the right level of, of recognition for students, positive compared to negative? So oftentimes, it's, it's an internal, you're valuing internally, whether or not you're a Stage 1 or Stage 2. That's one of the concerns I have with the program. Doesn't mean that it's wrong, just means that it's a concern that I have. But we have ways to help support that, and that is by working with the folks from AZU to help us come in and do some of those observations for us, and provide us feedback and information about what we're doing well and what we're not doing well. And so Mrs. Ross and I are in that process of communicating with them. Good question. From that, I believe we need to look at our practices, whether or not they are inclusive. We need to audit our consequences by event versus, versus the consequences. And what I mean by that is, we need to begin to look at, and part of this disproportionate is to look at, take the students that are being sent to the office, the reason, find common areas that they're being sent to the office for, pull that information to see what were the consequences for all of those students that had, that were sent for the same reason, and were, were our consequences fair and equitable across the board? That's how we audit to find out whether or not we're being, intentionally being disproportionate or not. And so we're beginning that process now. So I think that in itself is going to give us answers, and I hope to be able to bring that data back to you soon. And then I think we need to start having conversations about alternative program, and what we currently have and what we, what we may need in this school district.
That brings up, I think, when you talk about alternative programming, because in my mind, it really addresses two issues. One is alternative learning style, and one is actually an alternative program. And when you try to put the two together, that causes a lot of chaos. And I think that's what we have right now.
We do.
Bringing alternative learning and alternative behavior under one roof. And they really need to be separated.
That's exactly what we need to do, is start looking at what we're currently doing and what's not working, and have the, just have the tough conversations about, is it time for change?
And I think, Scott, you said?
Go ahead.
No.
So I guess, my question is, in all this, you say you're going to do some auditing and asking. When you guys, when you do this, are you actually sitting down with the teachers in the classroom, the ones who are having to deal with these kids, day in and day out, asking them what they want? Or are you just asking the principals to ask the teachers and then getting that information? Are you guys sitting down in the room with the, with the teachers who are in the, in the fire every day with these and saying, hey, what do you guys think we need? Do we need an extra, do we need an extra principal in the building? We need ISS building room? Are you, you guys asking them? Because they're the most important people. Are we getting that? Are we getting that information from them?
I can tell you that historically that has not been the practice. I can tell you that it's beginning. Last week, we had, we had a very lengthy staff meeting where we had those very conversations with the leadership team of a school as to where are we at, what do we need to do?
So what's the leadership team at school? Explain that.
Leadership team-
What's your definition of leadership?
Well, leadership team is made up of members of teacher, classroom teachers. So the principal chooses a, typically there's eight, ten, twelve, depending on the size of the building, classroom teachers and typically they represent across all grade levels. And so the leadership team we were with, they were kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade.
Okay.
Yeah. And so our conversations with them was, let's talk, let's talk in reality about where we're at, what's your data look like and what's happening in this building? Now let's talk about what you tried and let's talk about where do we need to go from here and what do we need, what do we need to do?
So we're doing that now?
Um, last week, we had one of those conversations and I would say that it was a great conversation.
That's good. I think that'll help out a bunch, don't you?
I believe it will, yeah. Because otherwise all we're doing is basing our decisions on assumptions and we're not getting anywhere. So.
And I might just interject from the, the start out here of what's disrupting the learning environment, okay? Our staff said overwhelmingly it's student behaviors, okay? And Coach Marshall even referenced, you could bring in, you know, more counselors and you can bring in more SROs or you could bring in, you know, that's what you're going to start dropping the hammer and cracking some heads, old school per se. But at the end of the day, I think we all know of having that positive learning environment for our students, having our parents collective action with our parents, working with us, being stronger together. Reading is an area of literacy. Your research would say that students that are at a fourth grade reading level and they're a freshman in high school, they may be a disruption because they don't want to expose the embarrassment of that. So what are we doing to increase the percent of our students, which is our long-term stretch goal, that one hundred percent of our students are at or above grade reading level? Those are long-term sustainable, but takes time. And so it, it's a fine line of holding kids accountable because I've had many folks saying, when are you going to start kicking these kids out? Well, that, that is an option. We're, we're trying to inspire these kids while still holding them accountable. It's a fine line, holding them accountable while still hopefully inspiring them to, to reach their potential for our staff to be difference makers. When we have staff, I've shared, we have old-school staff that wants to send them to the woodshed, as I said, and right out of, right out of college, let's have a group hug and have a box of Twinkies. I mean, you bring those extremes of what it looks like of student, classroom management, student discipline, and that's a fine line. So trying to get consistency through that while making, connecting with our students every day, greeting kids every day in the classroom to where they want to come back to school the next day and the next day. So we're looking at those options and we need to be consistent and get our staff input working through this process. So thank you for that. Sometimes student discipline, I, I didn't see anybody like, oh, this is going to be so exciting. It's student discipline, we recognize, but it's real and trying to recognize it. Well, Brenda was excited about it. No, so thank you for that.
Sorry, sorry it took longer than normal, but appreciate you listening.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Question, by, you know, one thing I would add, just really good information and very good presentation. And I appreciate, I think the, the thing that, I think you can see throughout all of this is the, the honesty and the upfront way in which you're presenting them. And I, I just wanted to touch on that for a minute because I think we spend a lot of time, and when you serve in a board role, I think it's kind of a natural position to be in to talk about accountability a lot, for us to say, well, we need to hold Larry accountable, Larry holds the staff accountable and, you know, the community holds us accountable. And so we have a, we have a lot of conversation around that word and what it means. But I also, you know, it occurs to me, Scott, you made a great point about making sure that we're, you know, that the administration is talking with the teachers and getting their directed input in terms of what's working, what's not, and what help do they need? And I, I would extend that to our, our building principals because I know every one of those folks have very, very difficult positions, they have difficult jobs. We ask a lot of them. And while there's a lot of eyes on the school district and a lot of eyes on us collectively, I also think it's important to be cognizant of the fact that those are very difficult jobs and we want folks to ask for help and let you all know if you, if they need assistance or tools or additional supports, then we want, we want them to be able to, to raise that. You know, I, you guys have heard me say before, you know, we should not be afraid of, of getting bad news or getting bad information or something that isn't quite as good as, as we would have liked. And so I just wanted to touch on that for a minute because I know that sometimes they can, they can be put in positions of making some really, really difficult decisions. And I, I think that from conversations that we've all had over the last many months, I think it's fair to say that, I think our expectation is, is that we want to support people to be able to create better outcomes for our students. That doesn't mean that there's no accountability there, but it does mean that, you know, if you have an issue in your building, you have some, some difficulties or if you don't have what you need, then raise those, share those with Lori or Gary or yourself. And so you guys have that opportunity to have those conversations and work through that. And it sounds like you are, but I just, like I said, I wanted to, to just dovetail with what you guys were talking about because I think that's an important piece from a, a culture and climate perspective, too. So thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Next item is financial officer, Mr. Jason Hoffman, financial update.
Just, just to add on a little bit on to that, we talked, we were talking about alternative settings and, you know, one of the issues we have is capacity. I mean, we're, we're out of space, but knowing that we have a building that might be freed up pretty soon, so trust me, we're talking about how to bring in additional alternative spots. I'm going to start this evening talking about our nutrition services program. We taught, we, as you know, we changed our main food supplier and you had asked for a quarterly update. And so I'd, I'd like to just start by talking about the program in general and first by introducing our new nutrition services director, Dana Dearhoff is here. She started with us October first. She's doing a great job. So a little bit about our program, we serve about ten thousand meals a day. We serve about thirty-one hundred breakfasts every day and sixty-nine hundred lunches. It's approximately, it's just under a six million dollar a year program and twenty-nine, only twenty-nine percent of that money comes locally. When we talked about our free and reduced lunch number, when sixty percent of our students participate in free and reduced lunch, that means our lunch program is subsidized by free and reduced lunch program. So over seventy percent of, of the program revenues come from U.S. Department of Ag. Have about two-point-six million dollars in salary and benefits to employees. And the program is designed to break even. We're, we're not expecting to make a lot of money, but it's also, if, if we're losing money in the food service program, that's money that's intended to, from the taxpayers to go to instruction and that would be supplementing our food service program, which in two thousand and eight, the program lost five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. And so Terry Ferguson was our former director. She did a great job of, of looking at how we staffed, how we were purchasing food and gobbled that down. And last year, we ran a surplus of two-hundred-and-two thousand dollars. So it's not like a typical restaurant where they're a standalone building. We don't charge utilities, we don't charge custodial services. When we rob, when we run payroll, they don't get charged back those costs. It's just what does it cost for our food, the services, the salaries and benefits compared to our revenues? But that's, that's the way the program is intended to go and we need to, to keep it that way. Where we are year-to-date, costs are down slightly. We did the food service bid, the bids were very aggressive and we're seeing that in what we've spent in food costs so far. Salaries are where we expected them to be and participation is very similar. So if everything continues on, we should make a small profit or do even better this year. And talking about our food supplier, one of, one of our concerns is it's, changing suppliers is always hard. We had a vendor that, that we had done business with and didn't have any service issues. They had done a very good job. Price, the, the new vendor had very aggressive pricing. So we switched with them. It was actually a very shaky start. Part of that was on us. We were without a director at that time, so not sure we were giving them all the information they needed to be successful. They've also changed their salesperson, so we have a new salesperson on our account. So it's starting to get better. I know they're trying very hard. We still have occasional issues, but it's not anything that, that we're ready to say we can't do business this way anymore. But so just going to continue to monitor. You know, they promised a new online ordering system and they actually were here today showing us their new online ordering system. So at this point, I think it's something that we can continue to work through. So be happy to answer any questions about that, any questions you have of Dana. We have a, a D E S I monitoring coming up, December eighteenth. Dana came to us from D E S I, so excited that she can handle the compliance cases.
I actually have one question. I noticed it in Brian's report. I thought last year Thorpe Gordon was part of the schools that became a hundred percent free and reduced and I saw their list is ninety-nine point seven.
You know, I noticed that too and I, I just noticed it tonight. We went through his presentation this morning, but I just noticed it tonight. And the only thing I can think of is we had, so any of the students that left East, they would have been part of the CE program that moved in, but students that are new to the district, no, they would be part of it. The only thing I can think of are students that came from moral heights and we just haven't tagged them as free, but I did notice that it was ninety-nine point seven.
Right.
So we have four schools that are part of the C E P program. They, while they have high enough free and reduced lunch, that we qualify all a hundred percent for free and reduced at those buildings. So we get all students at, at Thorpe Gordon, South, East and Callaway Hills get free breakfast and free lunch.
I have questions. I'm talking about that and she says just a recording here that it is a hundred percent. It's just-
Okay, excellent.
Okay.
Additional questions for Jason?
If not, I just wanted, in my packet, in my report in the packet, I talked about the Amrin lawsuit. And just, you know, I put in there that the county's asking for help with, with legal fees. Keep in mind, this is only the two thousand and thirteen case. Our, the attorneys for the county were shocked by the decision of the appeals court that they don't feel like Amrin really made a case that their, their values were set incorrectly. So they thought this was a slam dunk case. So they were, they were completely shocked because in fourteen fifteen, they've taken another tact for their appeal that they have actually gone out and done an appraisal and say, here's what we think this is worth versus the thirteen case, they're basing their whole case on an employee of the state tax commission came up with a form and said, here's how you should depreciate these assets. They didn't go through rulemaking process, they didn't go through regulations, it's just an employee made up a rule. And so pretty surprised at the ruling, but feel like we need to support the county in continuing the case. Just wanted to make sure we didn't have any concerns.
Do we have, I saw there's a letter in there from the Cole County Commission. Does it require a vote to support, to continue in financially supporting the lawsuit?
I haven't seen the agreement they've asked us to sign. They just said there, that will be forthcoming, but-
Okay.
I think at this point, just consensus that we're, we're willing to continue and we can procedurally complete that task when we need to.
And to clarify, for two thousand and thirteen, Amrin took a great deal of depreciation and all the counties involved, the assessors, took no depreciation or minimal depreciation?
No, they continued, they continued to depreciate the assets as, as they had historically. And Amrin in two thousand and thirteen, through some employee at the state tax commission, came up with a new form to depreciate the assets that was different than had been done in the past.
So that, so that's brought us all the way to-
So when, when Amrin appeals in two thousand and seventeen, we're going to, our portion of the protest attacks is going, is going to exceed two million dollars.
Yeah. God, it's crazy.
Which is why we should go protest our rate increases. Yes, because we're paying for it.
Which that's really what's frustrating to me is that the rates were set based on the taxes they were paying. And so if they win the case, that money just comes back, that comes back as a hundred percent profit. And so that's why I can understand why they're interested in pursuing this until the very end.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks.
Dr. Lintum, your November report?
Yes. Just want to touch on a few things. One, on the, the learning and our welding folks that were here earlier with regards to the, the partnership with our mechatronics class. Today, they had with the Greenway, if you, if you go down from Simonson, there at McCarty and Marshall, there's an awesome, I would encourage everyone, is an entrance to the Greenway through our welding class and our mechatronics class with the display of that. So it's a great entrance, great job to those guys and Sharon and the crew center and Gary in secondary and Brian with learning with that. I want to touch on attendance data. And one of our goals is to increase our attendance. You know, the root of it is to create a positive learning environment to where our students want to come to school, to where they're excited to come to school and that is the long-term, the root of sustainable change, to have a culture and climate to where, where students want to come to school. Basically, we have a developing blueprints, basically, that I ran this today. We can at any time report and we have a green, yellow and red for a stoplight, green in that ninety-two percent and higher as far as with green by our schools. Yellow is in the caution, doesn't mean speed up, as I tell my seventeen-year-old daughter. Yellow means do the caution and that what resources do they, do they need? And we don't want our buildings looking at it as, well, gotcha moment, but hey, what resource do you need from us? And we're not saying specifically financial, but just what can we do to help you here to increase your student attendance? And then the red as well. So that's something that we're working through. Under the partnership pillar, I'll first touch here, we had our November third Coffee with Larry, Community Coffee. The next one is scheduled for December first, so I encourage folks, if you're available on December first, seven AM. We have coffee that's a lot cheaper than most places because it's free. So I'd invite folks to come join us there. Gary Versloes, our Assistant Super Secondary Ed, has been working with Lincoln through a partnership, Lincoln, Parks and Rec of an MOU. We have a draft MOU, I'm not asking for your approval tonight, we will be at our December board meeting, but we have a draft here with regards to the tennis courts at the intersection of Dunkland and Lafayette. So Gary, would you mind kind of giving an overview of this, please?
One sheet is a copy of the memorandum of understanding between Parks and Rec and Lincoln University. The draft that I created for the Jeff City School District part, a lot of it is verbatim from the one between Lincoln University and Parks and Rec. A couple pieces specific to the district is what will we use the facilities for? And one question that I'm going to need direction on from the board and from Dr. Linticum is, so for how long will this memorandum of understanding go for? Forever and ever? For ten years, twenty years, fifty years? Something I'll need some feedback on, but as far as intended uses, just to have an extra place to, for our tennis teams to practice if there's an issue with Washington Park, our PE classes could use it for a unit, a week-long unit on tennis. And we have many, many clubs and organizations that are always doing some team bonding issues and they're looking for an activity or an event and I think that would be, they would be able to use that as well. So not a whole lot to add. And like I say, the, the memorandum of understanding on our behalf is very, very similar. A lot of the items are verbatim except for some of the scheduling. And again, the, how long this is going to be in place is something I'm going to need some direction from the board.
Anybody have any questions or, you know, you raised it, I mean, if anyone's got any thoughts on length of term, go for it.
Well, it would seem that some sort of length of term ought to correlate to proportion of funds. You know, we're, if we're supplying X portion of funds, then the, you know, that ought to not just cover a short period of time, but some proportionate, short of forever.
And proportion of time of use.
Yeah. And, you know, just getting it just now, I don't see anything in here about if there are scheduling conflicts. For example, how far in advance could Convention of Designers Bureau, for example, book outside tournaments and how far in advance, you know, can they book them for three years, five years, like we've done with our track meet, with the state track meet? How far in advance can we book district tournaments or PE? I guess those are, those are things I'd like to see there also to provide. I guess those are, those are things I'd like to see there also to provide some level of fairness.
In there, it doesn't talk about if there's a conflict. It does talk about scheduling to be through the Director of Wellness for Lincoln University, and that office is in the link. So that could be something that continue the conversations about.
Is that through Parks and Recs?
No.
Lincoln Wellness Center?
In the Wellness Center, is that with the Parks and Recs though?
Lincoln University's Wellness, Director of Wellness.
And just a point of clarification, out of past conversation, I believe that the intended purpose for Jeff City Public Schools would be primarily, we would use it to practice and then for physical education purposes. So, yeah, I don't believe that we would be using it for tournaments. I think someone had raised that in the past.
Right.
I think Washington Park is still going to function.
You wouldn't be able to use it for sanction.
No, you need eight courts in order to be sanctioned.
Right, yes.
And at the end of the day, if there's a conflict, I would anticipate, you know, Parks and Recs put in 300,000, and we put in 40, so I'm looking at, well, 300,000 trumps 40. And stewardship, I didn't feel comfortable spending 300,000 for the amount of time we felt we would be using it. So we'll work through that.
Yeah. Well, I agree, 300,000 does trump 40, but will it trump it every day or just proportionate? So, and I'm thinking, just off the top of my head, some like 3 to 5 years renewable? Yeah. I wouldn't go more than five. No, but renewable.
And I would suggest that we make it such that the administration can review it and share it with us, share it with the board at that time, and if there's no particular concerns or, you know, partnership has been going along well, then there's no reason to overburden it administratively. You know, if we're in a good spot in three or five years, then just move it along and go into the next term.
Here's just a draft, it's not final.
Correct.
So is it longer than three to five, or you know, is it longer or...
I don't hardly think so. I guess.
Make it subject to renewal.
Yeah, I would say five would be subject to renewal.
Thank you, Gary.
Next, just a touch on boundary line discussion. We, with regards to our district boundary lines, I shared earlier how we've made some changes last fall, last winter. We met with parents from Thorpe Gordon, East Elementary, and Morale Heights Elementary, made some changes. We feel they have been positive changes. As we look at our district boundary lines with regards to the second high school, our timeline is we would like to, at the latest, have something, I think we've shared in here before, for the start of next school year, so folks have a year in advance of knowing what those boundary lines would be. We hope, we'll have a timeline for you. I anticipate this early summer, May, June, possibly before that. We are going to, I believe that it closed the window Friday, Amy and Jason, is that correct, a window? We were asking folks for who would be interested in serving on the boundary committee, and talk about the number one topic that folks want to talk about is the boundary line. So we understand that, and that's important, and we're excited that folks are excited about that. But it's a, our goal at the end of the day is that regardless, we have 18 schools, and regardless of whether, where students go to school, that's a positive learning environment, that it doesn't matter where. But we also recognize that there are neighborhood schools, that, you know, my parents went here, my grandparents' traditions, we understand that. So we want to try to be proactive, we want to try to be very transparent, communicate, you know, with the boundary lines. And so we're going to have a meeting. I believe there were, is it 88?
90, I just pulled it up.
90, okay, so 88 plus two, we had 90 folks that said, hey, I'd like to serve on this. We're not going to have all 90. But we might get 90, 90 pieces of advice, even if we have less than that. But we're going to try to be upfront and honest, use some common sense, and I think through our policy committee, we've communicated that we want to revisit boundary lines more often than we have here in our school district. We basically have not. So anything you do would be better than that, but try to look at that consistently, and so we'll report back to you. We're going to have a meeting, kind of see where we are. Demographer Preston Smith, they can do it, the technology is pretty unique today versus having a map, and well, what if we moved here? The way with technology, you can move a boundary line, and you can see what it does to your enrollment, based on current demographics, your enrollment, your poverty level, the diversity, you can see a lot of different things. So we've shared throughout the campaign with the second high school that we want to keep enrollment numbers very similar, we want to keep our poverty rates very similar throughout that process. So we're excited about that moving forward, and I'll be giving you some updates. I just wanted to touch on that. Any questions on that?
When would you expect the committee to begin work?
Well, here in the next month. We'll be giving you an update, I anticipate, here every month with regards to our boundary lines. So the next thing I want to touch on was just our diversity meetings. There were five community meetings, three that we hosted, two that I was invited as a guest, one at Quinn Chapel, one at One in Christ Baptist Church, and then we hosted one that we facilitated. Our Boys and Girls Club was the first one that we facilitated. Location-wise, was the central location of our district boundary lines. That was our first one. The second one was at Hawthorne Bank Community Room at Truman and 50. Centertown doesn't have a community room, so we didn't meet there. And then the next one was at, was in Holt Summit at Mid-America Bank Community Room. So from that, we asked folks what they determined as the role, what's the school's role with regards to how we can be stronger together, and with regards to diversity? What's the school's role? What's the parent's role? What's the community's role? So gathering input, having the conversations with that, we had question and answer time at those. Still to come, we have 18 buildings and our staff. I believe last week, our elementary and secondary had met with our principals, and at their next staff meeting, our staff will go through that activity, and we'll gather that input as well. And then the student input, I'm anticipating in the next 30 days, grade six through 12, asking our students, hey, what do you see as a school's role with regards to how we can be stronger together moving forward? So analyzing all of that, of the school's role, community's role, parent guardian role, have the conversations on that, and it's not something, we've shared that there's, it's not a silver bullet. It's not something that, hey, when's it going to be fixed? It's been shared with me. It's been, things have been going on a long time, and it's going to take time, and we're trying the crock pot approach versus a microwave approach, and have the conversations, how we can be stronger together, and work through differences. And I think that's an important part of that, because we all have differences, we all have natural biases, and what that looks like, so we can be stronger together moving forward. So that's just an update on that. I'll give you an update here the next month. Here kind of where we are as we collect that data, and are there common threads as we review that? The last thing I want to touch on here was just the stewardship piece. At our December Faculty Council meeting, at our last one, we went through the activity of what they determined as a school's role with regards to diversity and how we can be stronger together. But at the December Faculty Council meeting, Jason Hoffman, Denise Pierce, Business Services, and Jason is our CFO and COO, will go through the budget development process with our Faculty Council. Our Faculty Council, we have 18 buildings, and we have one rep per building. We meet with them monthly, trying to work together collaboratively, and look forward to Jason leading that process with them here at the December meeting, and I'll give you an update at our December Board meeting. And that's all I have.
Busy time?
Yeah, lots of good stuff going on.
Lot of good stuff going on. Any questions for Larry's report? Follow-up? Very good, okay. Next item of business, you see future dates as they're listed there, just a couple of changes to note, number or letter A. Date with JCPS, we've actually had to nix that off of the calendar. We found that that day created quite a bit of a conflict for a number of folks, and so in discussions with Dr. Lintcom, we are going to look and see maybe taking another shot at that, perhaps in the spring, sometime that works better for legislators and folks that are, who are inviting. So look forward to more information about that in the future. And item D, Christmas break, that should be an early release date on December 22nd, so if you'll make that note there in your agenda, and you see the other dates as they're listed there. Thanksgiving coming up before you know it. Next item of business is old business, secondary of policies, as you see them listed in your agenda, Mrs. Murray.
Yeah, the policies were introduced at our last meeting, so this meeting is the final action, unless you recommend something other than that. And I'll just briefly describe the policies. The first one relates to school board vacancies and only applies to counties without a county commission. So the committee recommendation is to accept the changes. GBL talks about who has access to personnel records and generally restricts it, and the committee recommends accepting the MSVA changes as presented. GBLB refers to who can offer recommendations for employees applying in another district, and again, the committee accepts the recommendations of MSVA. GCPCD applies to giving employees notice of reasons and their rights in certain instances, and again, that's required by House Bill 1432, and the committee recommends accepting the changes. GDPC relates to suspension of support staff members, and again, is a law change, so the committee recommends accepting the changes. Policy GDPE is non-renewal and termination of support staff members, and this clarifies language that had previously been removed from the policy, and it's recommended that we put it in. So the committee voted to accept those changes. IKF relates to graduation recommendation, requirements, and we at the committee accept the changes and recommend them. JCB refers to inter-district transfers, and the primary changes in this are changes to the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is the successor to the No Child Left Behind, and we recommend accepting the changes. JCC is inter-district transfers, and the committee again recommends accepting the changes. JFCL is the A-plus schools program, which has a federal regulation that now requires students to have maintained good citizenship for all high school years, not just the last three, and we recommend accepting the changes to comply with the law. JO student records, this allows, the new federal regulation clarifies that students themselves, not just their parents, can opt out of providing student information to military recruiters, and the committee advised accepting that change to comply with the law. And the committee further recommended a recommendation that when we have a student directory, that a student's place of birth not automatically be included in the student directory. It was felt that that might not always be in the student's interest, and students and their parents are always free to ask that that information be included. And that sums them up, sums up the recommendations.
To know that was ever included in the student directory, I think that's odd, but, okay.
Yeah, but it's in our policy that it can be. So unless you support what the committee recommends. So that is what the committee recommends on the changes that are in your packet. Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Any discussion? Karen, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you all.
And before we move on, if I might, the next meeting of the policy committee is on November 30th, and we do have a new stack of policies that have come in from MSVA. Jason has also referred us a policy to change policies that reflect job titles that are no longer in use. And from this series, there was another policy that we held at the committee level pending further information. So if anyone has any recommendations of a policy or area that they want the committee to look at, if you would either speak up or send me an email copy to Stephanie.
There would be one that I would like the committee to take a look at. I'll just give just a brief overview, but I'll just send it to you in writing, and that is, I see that when we have a student involved in a drug issue, it's not so much when you have the drugs on you as an issue, it's when you may come under the influence or you suspected of being under the influence, and that could cause a suspension. But if you're not under the influence and you cannot afford to do your tests, you're kind of disenfranchised. And I would like a policy for the policy committee to take a look at, could we, could the policy come up where we do drug testing when it comes to our athletes? If we're going to have a situation of that nature that we're suspecting drug use, where you could have an instant test just to identify if in fact you have an issue? But I can put in writing to the committee.
That'd be great, and I think that's a good thing to take up.
So thank you, Michael. We're receiving that. Okay, on to the next item of business, which is new business, 2018-2019 draft calendar. Mr. Hoffman?
Do we want to move the naming committee down the track?
Move those folks up?
Yeah, they've been waiting very patiently.
They've been sitting very patiently.
Very well behaved.
I don't have a, I don't have an issue with that, if someone choose to...
So move.
Kisser.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. Good suggestion, good suggestion. So we'll take up the recommendation of the second high school naming committee?
Yes, and thank you guys for your patience.
I know all of this is absolutely riveted.
I will just kind of touch on the excitement, and Amy Berensen, our head of School and Community Relations facilitated and all that, but I just want to thank our community, the excitement, the anticipation. Again, thanking the community for supporting the passing of J+C. We, the community felt it was time, and felt that we want to give our students an opportunity to reach their potential, and as we work together for our students, so with our space issues that we've had. So anyway, with that, I just want to thank folks. Amy, come on up, and Amy, I'll let you kind of lead this, but want to share that with folks.
Hey, they all might have thought they weren't going to be recognized. There's three that will join me here in just a minute, but would the naming committee please stand up? We want to share our applause and our appreciation for the time they put into this office. You're going to be very pleased with what they provided for you tonight. I also want to thank Scott and Lori for being our board representatives and hanging out with us and attending meetings and giving some guidance and making us think maybe a little differently than we might have initially. So we appreciate you both. And I'll rewind, just to remind us all where we started, in October, actually, September 13th through October 4th. Feels like a long time ago, doesn't it, guys? We started collecting submissions, and through that process, we gathered and garnered 1,212 names or suggestions, not unique, but we went through all of them, didn't we, guys and gals? We sure did every single one of them. The committee met first initially on October 10th, and then we met again on October 24th. And at that meeting on October 24th, we took the board expectations, and those expectations were for this committee to submit a brief written report. We have that. Created a top 10 list of nominations, they're going to bring you nine, and they'll show their rationale as to why they feel strongly for those nine. They have developed a slate of three to five names, inclusive of rationale. They're about to knock your socks off with that as well. And then we're here to share that, they are here to share that with you this evening. So without further ado, as I hand out the report, I'd like to have Brock Schofield, the student representative, join me, Dolores Gags, our staff representative, join me, and Derek Miles, our parents and stakeholders, join us.
Good evening. It's been a pleasure to serve alongside the rest of the committee in the second naming high school committee. And as requested by you guys, the board, we are here to present you the top 10, nine names, list of facility names, and they are going to be included in no particular order. Capital City High School, Capital High School, Mission High School, Jefferson City Mission High School, Stone Ridge High School, Jefferson City South High School, Jefferson City Strong High School, Jefferson City West High School, and River City High School. And per the board's request, we have come to present a top three slate of names, followed by the rationale, for approval and public voting. And I'm going to present the first one, Capital City High School, some of the rationale included. It represents... It represents our proud, unique status as the location of our Missouri State Capitol. It's synonymous with Jefferson City, personifies equality, but gives the second high school its own identity. JC and CC sound good together in complementary as two district high schools, and they received the most community votes, and they received unanimous votes among our committee and also as well as our students when presented and gotten input back from students. And Mr. Miles will present the second option for consideration.
The second option that we came up with as a committee was Mission High School, and the reason that we came up with that was the site, that is, the new high school is actually adjacent to Mission Drive. The name Mission High School signifies Jefferson City Public Schools' mission to educate students, mission to learn, and mission of many in the community to pass the April 2017 ballot measure. And then lastly, represents forward motion and betterment of the community. And now I present Mr. Brock Schofield.
My name is Brock Schofield, and I'm here today to present the name Stone Ridge, the committee has chosen. To start, there's a street near the facility location that is named Stone Ridge. The Stone Ridge Parkway Shopping Center and nearby Rock Quarry are located in the general area. The name Stone Ridge represents the historic ridge the facility will be built upon. This beautiful ridge sitting high on the hill overlooks our wonderful city. The Stone Ridge name sounds strong, professional, and attractive. I surveyed a group of seventh grade students at Thomas Jefferson Middle School and found that Stone Ridge was one of the favored names. However, Capital City High School was their top choice. These are just a few reasons why seventh graders chose the Stone Ridge name. Because I like saying I go to Stone Ridge. It sounds cool. It sounds like a great school to go to. It shows strength. It sounds professional. It has a good ring to it, and because it sounds cool and describes the general area where the high school is stationed. Thank you for the time and the opportunity to serve on this committee.
We often look at graphs and charts. Brock, do you have your press special that you shared with the committee as well? Show the board. Show them.
He brought, he's the only one that had graphs and charts at the meeting. He showed us out.
Yeah, he's seen real estate.
It was very embarrassing when he did that.
So, as you can tell, they put a lot of time, effort, thought, and conversation. They did their homework between from committee meeting to committee meeting. They took the task at hand and they literally ran with it. Scott, Lori, is there anything else you want to share when you attended or any?
They were awesome. They took a lot of hard questions and looked into it and did a lot of thinking, and they're a good group. There's a lot of good conversation, a lot of banter back and forth, and they came up with three good names. I think they did a great job.
So what's next, right? So we'll look for your approval. Get back to us when you're ready. We're ready to turn the voting button back on and take this out for public voting. We'll probably continue with the same three-week timeframe, time period, as we did previously with the selection of the initial names. And then if all works well, we'll keep this name under our hats until we break ground in January, February-ish. January? Okay. And we'll unveil the name of this awesome, amazing second high school at that point in time.
So the summary of your three names, let's just summarize that.
The summary of the three, in no particular order.
And let me just interject. So basically, these three names asking for your approval, and then take these three to the community and let the community vote on these three.
And they would just be voting the slate of the three. We'll make sure and share the rationale and put that out publicly as well. If folks like us, as we're voting or having a difficult time and you need that rationale to help maybe guide your decision, we'll make that available as well. But stakeholders will be asked to select one of these three. Capital City High School, Mission High School, and Stone Ridge High School.
You're not the reason why we can't just go ahead and?
I would second that.
Can you move it?
I think it's a strong slate. I echo Scott's comments and yours. I think they've done a nice job.
I move to put the three names out to the public for a vote? I second.
Thank you, Lorelei. Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Thank you to the committee for you guys' time. So thank you.
Well, turn on the green go button for our morning. We'll be live in. Thanks for your patience.
Yes, we appreciate everybody sticking with us. And thank you for making that suggestion. Appreciate you coming to serve.
Just clear the floor, Lori.
Now the calendar. We want to hear about the calendar.
That's right.
Yeah, no kidding.
Follow that, Jason.
Right. So this is, this is the first reading of the calendar since we start school prior to, I don't remember the exact wording in law, but we start school prior to Labor Day, basically. So we have to have a hearing to approve our calendar. So this is the first reading, and next month we'll have a hearing to approve the 2018-19 student calendar. A lot of people think that we have a lot of flexibility in the calendar, and that's just not true. We have a bunch of things that confine what we can do. Starting at the back, we like to finish, if at all possible, prior to Memorial Day. We just feel that if we come back to school after that holiday, our attendance is going to be down. We're already past the MAP testing window. We need to try and get as much instruction ahead of that. So that's kind of our end point, knowing the things that are built in. We have a Christmas break. We have some professional development time. We have Thanksgiving. We have spring break. So bringing all of those things into play, and then also, I don't know how long, how many years in a row we've done this, but we have started school on a Thursday, and that has been wildly popular with our staff. It allows us to get our three professional development days in on that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. They come in, they have two days with their students so that they can kind of get it going with a short week, get all the start of school stuff out of the way, and then hit it with a full week going forward. You see the orange, the dates that are in there, those are early releases, and we tried to keep them all on Wednesdays so that for parents notice February 12th, I don't know exactly what state holiday that is, but we moved Lincoln's birthday. So we moved that off of a, off of what would have been the 13th. Normally, we move that to the 12th to try and accommodate that for our parents that are state employees. There's a half, the 21st of December is a half day. The others, the other orange ones are two-hour early releases. Amy, Mallory, am I missing anything?
I don't think so. Do you want to talk more about the, we moved this whole PD day in March, right? To spring break.
No, that's the earn day off. We moved the earn day, we have two, so one of the other things that we have to work with, we have two teacher earn days off. They were, teachers work evenings for parent-teacher conferences. So in exchange for them working those evenings to meet with parents, they get a day off built into here, and we moved one of those to the 25th of March so that we can have a fixed spring break. And you see the blue days, we're also required by law to have six snow days built into the calendar. So you see we have four in May, and depending on when the first snows occur, we could potentially use February 18th and April 19th.
Don't say when, Jason. Say if.
If.
We do live in Missouri.
I know.
It can snow, and we can still have school.
That's right.
It's crazy.
The only other moving the early release day, moving the early release day from October into August because we already have a PD day.
That was the latest movement that we had. We had, we were trying, we've traditionally had an early release day in October, but having the 8th as a PD day and the 26th as a staff compensation day, it didn't make a lot of sense to have a PD day on the 8th. We were at the 17th of October to have an early release there. That's also midterm, and so we heard from our staff that it's not, it's not good for them to have that on or around midterm because of getting tests done and grades in. So we moved it from October to the 29th of August, and the thinking is, we are packing a ton of things into those first three days. Not only the teachers trying to get ready for school, we're trying to get as much PD in, so to have a start of school and then a two-hour early release is kind of a refresh, we feel like that's going to be a popular move.
Will graduation be on May the 12th?
I don't know that.
They go step back date to the high school. Traditionally, that's, that's the day that it ends up being on.
It might be Mother's Day or weekend.
Except for the years, it's back in the area.
Has this gone through the faculty council or?
We did not at the faculty council. No, we did not. So it's a first draft. I mean, it's, this is, I think, in the normal practice here in the fall, and we'll take that to the faculty council. I know, discussions, I know with David Ganey and Robin Bean, being with MSTA, gathering our staff input. I know we did that, and that's the plan here, but having a first draft. Basically, one from administrative, excuse me, Steve, from administrative, from a Brian, Chief of Learning, Lori, Gary, elementary, secondary, and what is the schedule we need to ensure student learning? And so a starting spot, and then we'll involve our staff in that process like we have, but also with faculty council anticipating.
And I think we also heard in Jason's comments that we've already made, that they've made, the calendar committee has made some efforts to add, including staff feedback in terms of professional development days and things of that nature.
Correct.
Off to a good start, I think. Any questions about the calendar? Again, this is just a initial look for us tonight.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Finger back up.
Back again. Thank you. So, I'm at a weird spot that, for the first time in my professional career, I don't know the right answer to this. So I'm going to go through this with you. So we're going to talk, we, I am 100% confident that a wrap-up is the right idea for us, and we've talked about the difference in wrap-up and traditional. And so I've, I've learned as much as I can on OSIP and CSIP, and so I'll go through this and talk to you about more what I'm thinking at the end. So, we've talked a lot about the two different kinds. So there's contractor-controlled insurance program, that's the CSIP. So the contractor faces all the potential risk if, if claims are higher than expected. They also reap the reward if claims are lower than expected. They handle the administration and claims control and oversight, and NABHOLs are, construction manager at risk is very familiar with the process. They have a, an insurance company that they work with. They've been doing CSIP since 2011, and that's basically what they do on the majority of their projects. And they really would like us to do a CSIP. So then the OSIP is owner-controlled, and everything is the same, just flipped. We, as the owner, would face all the potential risk with if claims exceed expectations, but then we also reap the rewards if they're lower. We handle the administration and oversight. I don't have the time or the expertise to do that, so built into our pricing is purchase services to, to handle all of that from, from our OSIP broker. And while NABHOLs is familiar, we are not familiar with it, but the broker that we're working with is a very well-known world-class organization that, that had, they've done more than 700 of these, and if it weren't for them, I would 100% be leaning towards the CSIP. But we have a dynamite team that, that we're working with. So, the process that we've gone through, Willis Towers Watson, I'll start with the OSIP. Willis Towers Watson is a multinational risk management company. They do insurance brokerage, advisory. Before I started talking with Willis Towers Watson on this, I was familiar with Willis through PSRS, my time on the board at PSRS. It is a, they're a company that is a combination of Willis, which you have all heard of the Sears Tower. It is now the Willis Tower. They've purchased the naming rights to the Willis Tower in Chicago, and Towers Watson merged, and our advisory consultant with PSRS was an employee of Towers Watson and then stayed on and was Willis Towers Watson. So I'm familiar with Willis Towers Watson from the advisory consultant practice through the pension system.
So Willis isn't a possible recommendation for the naming of the second high school?
Well.
We get them right at check.
It was already passed out.
That's true. We already, go ahead.
Thank you, Lori.
No problem.
So Willis took our, our product, and they marketed to eight companies for GL, general liability and work comp. So that's what we're talking about. We're talking about this wrap-up is for the general liability and the work comp, and they took it to four companies for excess liability. And the proposal that they brought forward was for Travelers, also another well-known, multinational, excellent company. They would be the underwriter of the insurance for GL and work comp, and then we would be buying excess liability from Chubb and Allied World. So we would basically have $52 million of coverage every year for the life of the project, and then there's a statute of reposed that is 10 years after construction. So that is the amount of insurance we would have. And so built into all of the pricing with the OSIP, it's very transparent. It has, here's your cost for the general liability, here's the comp for the work comp, here's their, their fee for marketing it and their commission, here's your amount that you need to pay for claims oversight. So all of that is broken down, and I'll show you those numbers. And then with NABHOLs, they've, like I said, they have a company they work with, and theirs is just a flat percentage. It's 1.985% of construction costs. And so no transparency, it's just, here's what you pay if you go this route. But, but their, sales point back to that is, here's what you pay, you wash your hands of it, we handle everything. So, what does it look like financially? I don't have exact numbers, but what I'm hearing, the estimate for, because remember, we're going to ask our subcontractors to bid without insurance. So they're going to go, they're going to go to their insurance companies and ask to bid our project without insurance and get a credit back from their insurance company for, for this project. So if we'd have gone the traditional route, we would have paid approximately $2.7 million in insurance, and each subcontractor would have had insurance with different limits, and we've been through all of that. And that would have been factored into their bid and in our construction costs, and we would have never seen that number. NABHOLs is, CSIP is 1.985, so just under $2.2 million. So going a CSIP, one of the other reasons why I'm confident that a wrap-up is the right way to go is, we immediately would save $500,000 over if we'd have gone the traditional route. And NABHOL says, we know how to do this, you're saving money, you can write us a check for $2.2 million if construction costs are $110 million, and you wash your hands of it, we handle everything. If claims are high, you're safe. If claims are low, I mean, they don't say this part, if claims are low, we, we benefit. But that's, that's the CSIP piece. So, I left that up there and then added, so the OSIP, the fixed cost, $1,252,000. That's the cost of, of the insurance to Travelers, to Chubb, to, I can't remember the other excess carrier. It also includes, if you see, $252,000 for loss control oversight services. They would put someone on our job sites every day to help control losses. We don't really need someone policing, we need somebody helping with a safe culture to prevent losses. Then you buy different types of coverages. So you had, you see the maximum claim, so you have claims, you have a specific deductible, so a per-incident deductible, and then you have an aggregate deductible. So you would have to hit several of the specifics before you hit your aggregate. But once you hit that aggregate, we would not have more than $1,271,000 in claims. That's worst-case scenario. That would be considered a 100% loss. So you, worst-case scenario, we would be spending $2.5 million. Compare that, so it's, worst-case scenario, it's better than the trad- Compare that. So it's worst case scenario, it's better than the traditional. But it's $339,000 more than what we can get from NABHOLs. So you you that's your that's your risk of doing the OSIP is potentially losing or spending $339,000 more than than the sure thing that you would be getting from NABHOLs. So this is what it looks like at different loss. So you see the 100% and then at 90, 80, break even is around 73% loss. I heard from NABHOLs that they're expecting 53% loss is what they price their model at. Hearing from Willis Towers Watson, they say national average is 50%. Willis Towers Watson says, bringing in their expertise of of safety, the $252,000 will have for onsite oversight. And then NABHOLs, NABHOLs has been great. They want us to do a CSIP, but they've been very accommodating. They participated in an underwriting call where they talked about their safety program. So they've been great. So that's another thing that's benefited us is all of these carriers know NABHOLs is a great company that has a safe culture. So if you had 50% loss, we would save approximately $300,000 over if we went with the CSIP. So Willis Towers Watson said they would expect it to be in the 40s or 30s.
Let's remind everyone that we're still saving about $500,000 just with the CSIP from the traditional insurance product.
Exactly.
So we're.
Already up.
We're already up. Right. And so I guess that's what on top of that 500.
That's exactly right.
Sorry.
No. I mean, that's that's that's.
Most of the folks, the experts that you've talked to, they're saying we would be somewhere between the 50 and 60 or 50 and 40.
Yes. Willis Towers Watson says with with NABHOLs being such a strong, safe contractor, Travelers is bidding this and Travelers underwrites NABHOLs's surety work. So they're they're already familiar with NABHOLs as a company. So Willis Towers Watson would say they wouldn't be surprised if it's 30%. NABHOL says they price in at 53% and expect they hope it to be better than that.
Then my question would be, Jason, at this point, with NABHOLs and previous projects that they had completed, where did they fall?
So I don't have that. They were so their claims are out there in the insurance world. And so the underwriters that we were working with on that call asked for NABHOLs to to explain some very large claims that had happened in the past. And some of them involved litigation, so they didn't really want to share that with me. But they talked to the underwriters, so I don't know a lot of the details about their specific claims. Prior to them using a wrap-up, they had in 2010, they had some very large claims. And they blame it on the fact that they weren't using a wrap-up and the subcontractor didn't have the appropriate limits. And so they had to step up with their coverage over their subs to take on some very large claims.
And the gist of this too is we don't want anyone to get hurt. So what we're doing is just buying the product in case someone does. But again, work comp and a general liability is two different things. So and I know it it's tough to explain some of that. But the work comp is for the employer relationship. It's very structured. General liability is for someone outside of that employer-employee relationship, not structured. So you can you very, very much limited exposure on a work comp. General liability is is wide open, except for your limits, which are set within, you know, obviously what the exposure could be for the insurance company. But we're just buying a policy just like you with your homeowners and your umbrellas. Nothing's they're just bigger numbers. That's really the gist of it.
So today, I in trying to get all this finalized, I've been going back to NABHOLs, going back to Willis Towers Watson, trying to find, you know, they both tell compelling stories. But NABHOLs brings up today that included in their CSIP is a is coverage for professional and pollution coverage. And so when I did my research on pollution, I told Larry, I said, insurance companies want to insure against Martian attacks. And some people buy that. And when you read about pollution, they're like, what I've read, and it was out of Travelers' sales piece, is that the claims are extremely rare and but when they happen, they're large. So there's some amount of money and I don't have a quantifiable number for if we want to get pollution coverage, what that we would have to buy on top of the OSIP if we went that route. So that was a wrinkle that was our curve ball I got today.
And pollution would be covered in the?
CSIP.
CSIP.
Well, they're keeping anything like diesel fuel or fuel on site. And we have any streams are marshes and it gets into the groundwater. It doesn't take long for it to become a very expensive cleanup. I discovered that ignorance is bliss. I thought this was a wonderful idea to tell a student research on it. And I mean, I read these two articles and I just script of the Jesus.
And it was about Pam sent me the articles and they're mostly about litigation. I mean, there's litigation in in any kind of risk. And so.
Well, one is from a law journal, Law 360, and sure, did cover the whole gamut of nightmares. And the other was an insurance journal. And so, of course, they're talking about the cost of in defending a claim. But they brought up a lot of scenarios that I had not considered prior to this, such as coverage for off-site work, like if a window is fabricated off-site, but your coverage is onsite, that can become a bond contention. And then your coverage limits can be used up on legal fees and bringing in experts to testify. They had a five to one ratio. But one of the things you covered it for the OSIP, that there'd be a 10-year after the project's done. There's a 10-year period of time for defects or problems that occur afterwards. Do we know that that's same period of time as theirs for CSIP? Because here they talk about sometimes the policies end at the time the certificate of occupancy is issued. And we're going to occupy that building for ninth and 10th graders potentially before the entire project is done.
No, and it's required in Missouri that you have the statute of reposed that has to be covered.
So we talked about that last time.
Do you have a feel for what your workload is going to be on one versus the other?
It's going to be more on the OSIP, but I don't think a lot more. I think I think Willis Towers Watson is is dedicating the the services. I mean, once again, I think we're going to be the first school that that's ever going to do this. In the past, it was designed for projects of 100 million or more. And I think they're starting to see the benefits of that at even smaller projects. So I could see this coming in and and being something that other schools do in the future.
To put it more succinctly, if you were to go back to the original start where you had the numbers at 2.0. That's that's dollars 2.69 dollars out of our bond money that we would be spending on insurance.
Right.
You know, what's our what's our payback on the 20 years?
Right, 20. 20.
Okay, what's the time value of that money? Okay, we're talking real cash here. So this this discussion is very worthwhile. And so even if we're talking 500,000, you know, you're looking at maybe 600 or more, you know, once you get into it.
Sure.
Where would we put that money elsewhere? You know, that's a fourth of the school lunch program, right?
It's a couple of textbook series.
Yeah. It's worthwhile to even have this discussion, let alone talk about doing all the owner stuff. So the risk issue is, do we push? So here we're sitting at 511,000 savings. The next is, do you want to push for that extra little risk? Are you willing to take that risk?
That's exactly right.
You know, for the next several years to deal with the tail associated with getting that extra 300.
300 to 500,000 is what I would think.
Do you have a recommendation?
In totality, we're looking at if you went with one, this one versus the other one, it's about 800,000 because adding another three onto that five.
But your risk is much higher with the other.
You could lose all of that 800,000.
That's why I asked the question.
And I'm I'm not worried of the work.
I have another question. Deductibles. Because deductibles can kill you.
Well, and that's when you talk about the risk. So you have a specific claim and it has a deductible of $250,000. And so that's built in. So you would have to get several of those to get to you. You'd have to have five of those where you where you hit your specific deductible to hit your aggregate. Now you'll have smaller claims that will also count towards your aggregate.
Right.
But but that's how you that's how the the product is put together.
And have deductibles with NABHOLs, right?
Nope. You write a check for.
And still realize the savings. I mean, I think the discussion here is we win-win. So what what he's getting at is we're going to save 500,000 if we use NABHOLs. Do we want the school district to take a little bit of the extra risk associated with this project and save up to the 500?
And like I said, if if we didn't have Willis Towers Watson helping us, I mean, they they have an amazing team. I'm 100% confident that they would give us great service.
Travelers is pretty well.
They're not a bad company.
They're not a bad company either.
Jason, what is that? Okay, the total cost for the OSIP is 2.1.
For the OSIP, worst case scenario is 2.5. That's if you have if you have 100% loss. And keep in mind, it's not you can't just have one big loss to get to that. We have a $250,000 deductible that would cover a specific loss. It would be it would be several substantial losses to get there. And that's why they say it'd be hard. That's why 100% isn't really reasonable.
So so.
So we have two major projects.
But that's all figured into our construction cost and so Michael, you asked about NABHOLs's claims. The claims that they had since 2010 on their list, they only had two that were over $250,000.
So, okay, but I guess the question I would have though is even okay, what is the base price we would have to pay for that premium? Would it be the 1.25? And then the other one is 1.27.
Those are the claims on top of that.
On top of that.
1.25.
1.25.
Right.
Potential.
Potential, potential, right. So if you and I guess if you're saying they paid out between 250 and 400,000 over the past history, they're going to be making 700,000. No, more than that because it's 2. almost a million, over about a million four. If it then we have to pay it out something like.
So we're going to we're going to write a check to NABHOLs for 2.183. And if they don't have any claims, they keep 2.183 and they their fixed cost, I would think, would have to be similar to that. So they make they get $900,000 that we paid them that.
But we're going to write a check for 1.52.
Over 2.5.
I mean, 1.2, 2.52.
Right.
Yeah. Right? So really, the difference between the two is a million dollars.
Right.
Of potential savings that we would have while we experience some more risk. And we just have to decide the cost benefit analysis of that.
But not only is it assuming the risk, it's assuming the expertise to recognize the problem.
That's what he's saying.
But I think the other people would be just as expertise. I mean, the other ones are just as good, Travelers and all them.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about the insurance company. But I mean, sometimes to recognize a defect that might be a claim that NABHOLs is maybe a little more experienced.
I just have trouble leaving. I have I have trouble leaving money on the table. You know, I'm tight. Sorry, but I have trouble leaving. Being a good steward of money, I'm I have trouble leaving a million dollars, possibly a million dollars.
Taking more risk and more manpower.
I understand. I understand.
I mean, I I could I could make an argument either way. I agree. I hate to leave money on the table. On the other hand, it's we got more risk.
So we're doing a wrap-up. If we assume that we're doing a wrap-up, we save $500,000 off the traditional insurance product as it normally do in every other project that we've done up to this point in our course of time.
Well.
Right?
Absolutely.
So that's a win by itself.
Absolutely.
If you take it to the next level of, okay, how do I fine tune this just a little bit more? You have also the potential to have a little bit more outlet cash. But that's assuming 100% claims. But if you if you go to the if you go to the normal loss of 50% ratio, which NABHOLs wants to hit too, I mean, they don't they don't want their folks getting hurt, neither do the subs. The whole point is to keep people on the job.
Right.
You know, and yes, people will get hurt. It's a human nature. We could still save $295,000 of the industry average. In addition to the 511.
In addition to five.
Yeah.
So you're talking about $800,000 worth of taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, today's dollars.
Yes. But wouldn't that be even more though if we never went past the maximum?
Yeah, but what he's saying is that that's assuming 100% risk. And I think what Rich is saying is you're going to have probably 30 or 40. So realistically, if we go with the owner risk, realistically, we're talking about not saving a million dollars, but saving 295,000.
So you can't but you can't in the meantime spend this money.
Right.
That's what I'm what I'm getting at though is you can't turn around and budget that and spend it right away because you still have to make up for a lot of the potential.
You still it still will be in the savings account. You got to have it there in case you have to use it. But if you don't have to use it, that at the end, that's a win, that's a win split. But I'm looking at it at the beginning as a loss potentially. I could lose it all.
You've been to the boat too.
But I spend it all. What you don't put in the middle. That's right.
Well, you know, I see both sides and that's why both sides are tired of hearing from me. Because I hear something from one, I'm like, oh, yeah, that makes sense. So I go to them and they have a great explanation for.
So Jason, what are you recommending?
Prior to hearing the pollution thing and not having that information, I was certainly really leaning towards the OSIP, that I'm I'm comfortable with with the support we're going to get from Willis Towers Watson. I'm comfortable with the products that they've proposed to us. And so, you know, I I don't like taking risks either. But when I think about how many how many negative events we have to get to even get to 50%, I feel like NABHOLs being an excellent safety company, when when they participated in the underwriting call, they said, are you they asked them, are you going to have a full-time safety person on site? And they say, no, we don't believe in that. We don't believe in safety police. We believe in a safety culture that our onsite project manager is our safety manager. And he instills safety every day. So, I mean, NABHOLs has proven as a as a safe employer. They don't want people to get hurt. They want to get our project done so that we're happy. So I I I think we will win if we do the OSIP, but we are taking on some additional risks.
But it's also fair to say that we took a risk doing the construction manager at risk.
Right.
It's not a proven process that that the school districts have seen before. It's a proven process in the industry. But we took a risk there. You know, the next step, okay, we'd save 500,000, still win. The the question is, now do we want to take it to the next step? Do we will do we have the will to take on this type of risk then?
It's going to get greedy.
Yeah, yeah. I feel like you take one risk and you win. You know, sometimes you need to know what to hold in.
That's only because you've got a broker helping you.
Yeah, oh, exactly.
If you were doing this on your own, it'd be different.
When they came to me even before we passed the bond issue, knowing that this was coming up and I was like, this doesn't make any sense. How can you not pay? How can you not pay work comp just because we're paying it? But, like I said, they've done over 700 of these Willis Towers Watson has.
It's also important to note that I think we're, this timing is highly important in terms of making a decision.
Absolutely.
We already have one bid out in the marketplace. We agreed that's essentially to create a whole ground entrance, but there's risk in that, too.
Well, and we need, that's why timing is of the essence, because we need to tell those contractors what insurance they're going to have and instruct them how to bid without the insurance.
We need that to serve.
Michael Feimster with NAPLES said by November 20th, but sooner is better.
That's seven days.
I would make a motion that we accept Jason's recommendation, OSIP.
Can somebody second so we can have some discussion?
Can I hear a second?
I will second. Thank you, Rich.
So my next question is, what's it mean for the subcontractors? The difference between it being, is there any difference for them?
It should be seamless for them.
Either way.
Either way. Subcontractors will be held harmless in that respect. Now, here's the one change, and then the caveat I will have, that in almost every insurance product, you will have the right of subrogation. Does anybody understand what the right of subrogation is? And you have it in all your insurance policies or standard stuff. So if someone hurts you and your insurance company pays for your claim, the insurance company sues the person who hurt you. That's the right of subrogation. It's kind of like looking at a trial. Okay? So in this case, they might go after the contractor who caused the injury to someone else. But that's a recovery vehicle. You're held harmless. Your issues are done. Their own issues have to be taken care of there. But for the sake of this project, that injury is covered.
But that would only be general liability, right? Work comp, that's the only remediation is work comp.
Separate issue.
But that's going to be the case whether we do a CSIP.
It's just who helps him and all.
Either way, our subs, I mean, I want our local people to participate. So I don't want to make it harder for them one way or the other. So if there's no difference, then I support your motion.
Good question. No, but it really comes down to the people who have to manage it. I mean, we're not going to. So Jason, what do you want to?
I'm comfortable that Willis will give me the support that I need.
I'll support you.
You can add any thoughts?
No, I agree.
Want to, let's be conservative, let's not get greedy. I'm not saying that we are.
But we also have to know that there is a potential for this 339 number to follow.
You have to go into it with your eyes open.
Right.
So we can't spend those dollars.
Right. You're going to have it in your savings account. It's always going to be there.
That's what you're technically covered, is that's the question.
So we would need to keep that encumbered for like the 10 years or at least through the.
So we have to have a line of credit as part of the things that we have to do. And so I was, that was one of the things I was worried about, but I've already met with local banks, and they're comfortable if we put, it's $500,000 that we have to have a line of credit. They said if we would put $500,000 into a CD, so we already have $500,000, we know we're going to have to have invested, that they would write a lot, they would use that as collateral and write a letter of credit, and it would cost us the $500 to get the documents drawn up. And so we have to keep that for the statute of repos, but we're going to have $500,000 in the bank every year, I hope.
If we don't, we get far more.
That's right. And so.
I got a question. So we go that route, NAPLES, they get upset. Are they going to be watching as closely as they should be? I mean, we're.
It's a fair question.
Are they going to be watching as close as they should be? And then now we're kind of.
I can't imagine, I don't know them personally, but I can't imagine that a contractor would want someone to get hurt.
I understand that.
But I think what you're asking is a very fair question.
I mean, they're like.
Is their ethos going to spread the same that they have in the past?
Right. Because now they don't have skin in the game.
Skin in the game, right.
Because they were looking, they were banking on that, oh, we just made, hey, guys, we can make up to a million dollars more, or whatever it was going to be. Now, it's out of our pocket. That kind of, that's a little bit, you kind of, I don't know, I'm not in the construction world.
I think it's a very fair question.
I agree.
So $900,000 safety bonus if they. I think in the end, we're going to be spending the same money anyway we do.
I understand.
Because I think they'll be making that up somewhere.
No, I do, too. I do, too, but it's just sitting behind you.
I do contractors. I know how they work.
They'll get their money.
Same amount of money, period.
Are you comfortable? I mean, you're the man, you know this more than the rest of us.
I am, but.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but.
I am, but I also want everyone to know that there is a risk potential in that pendulum.
Yeah, 330.
And, but we also have the opportunity to reap the savings of just that much. I think it's fair to say that it's a win just starting off with the CSIP. You know, that shouldn't be lost on anybody. You're walking away tonight saving 511,000 on a product that normally we'd be paying anyway.
Plus, we feel like we're going to have better coverage. I mean, we talked about the litigation that happens with traditional insurance, where this contractor's insurance doesn't want to pay, and this contractor's insurance doesn't want to pay. And so now the project comes to a halt because nobody's moving forward. This isn't going to be the case. We are the first client of insured. We're just going to say, insurance company, go cover it. We don't care who was at fault. Go cover it, and our project will move forward. So we're doing this, saving money and getting better coverage.
Let me just, correct me if I'm thinking this flaw. Under the OSIP, even from the traditional, we're still saving 100 and something thousand from the get-go, even if we had to go to the max.
100% loss would be about 160,000 to the good.
Right.
We're saving 500 off the top, and we have the potential to have to pay out 360.
Right.
Right.
370 or 340. So we're 160 to the good.
Right. So to me, that's kind of where I fall down. Number one, you have a broker working with you, and it sounds like you're getting from them what you think you need, even in the initial stages of conversations, which is always a good indication. And if we're already up at $500,000 in initial savings because of the wrap-up program itself, my concern is, and I've heard it, I was waiting to hear the numbers fleshed out, is if we eat into that initial savings, then my concern would be a little different. But to me, I think, I think that the potential to reap some additional savings is worth the risk.
It is. But I mean, your question that you had earlier was spot-on. I mean, I wish, in some ways, I wish they were here tonight to set out our minds a piece of, maybe it isn't necessary, but it's a significant cost that we need to take. And I don't want to have to beat every time to be saving $100,000, but you know, these kinds of savings don't come along very often, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Is that a question we can ask them?
We can always come back next week or somewhere between now and next Monday to just deal with that one issue. I do like the fact that they have already created a safety culture. It sounds to me like that's part of their mission.
Sure.
And the way they move forward. So I don't think they're going to change that just because they don't, we're not paying it.
They have a safety manual. They shared that with the underwriters, so I mean, they're not going out and creating a safety manual. They're still going to operate as a safe culture. And I was concerned about that, too. And so, you know, I asked for all this information, and, you know, they really want us to do a CSIP, but they've been awesome at providing us all the information. They've been very supportive. I mean, I think their main goal is to make sure we have a great finished product. I mean, I'm sure they would like to have this, but this is a.
Well, I don't think that we should characterize the money that they would save if, and I, maybe I'm defending NAPLES, but I don't want to characterize the money that they would reap as savings, quote-unquote, if they have a safe project, as a windfall. We should probably say that because they are covering that exposure if we get beyond that, if we get to the 100%. They're covering that, I guess, if it's going to get that.
And they're providing resources to get there. I mean, they're covering the cost to keep it safe.
It's work. Now, we will be taking on that work if we do the OSIP, and if you feel comfortable, then, you know, I think the risk is worth it a little more.
Right.
But we're actually paying a broker to assist in doing that, so we're going to get a fixed cost anyway.
Right.
So.
But that just tells you what type of sacrifice NAPLES is, frankly, that.
Totally agree.
My thoughts, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's from your comments in previous meetings, it sounds like that's been our general experience thus far. I mean, from working to put together bid packages and our bid packages, but presentations to potential bidders while we're working through issues with contracts.
Contracts, right.
So to me, that, you know, that certainly is an indication of a good, very positive beginning to a business relationship. So that factor's into my mind as well. If you had, if we had already had some issues that we'd have to work through and we've had some concerns, you know, then to me, maybe the calculus is a little different here, but again, yeah, I think that's a real testament to who we selected.
Right.
Their culture of safety, I get how that would directly impact workers' comp, although there will still be accidents. But how does that play into the general liability?
I don't know that exactly, but I know the underwriters were interested in what type of safety measures both the contractor were going to have and we were going to have. So not being a safety expert, I don't know that I can answer that, but.
So, yeah, what was your question again?
So just faulty workmanship and.
Their culture of safety obviously will have a positive impact on workers' comp, but will it have an impact on general liability?
Imagine a scenario where an individual is driving on the worksite, it hits another employee, that's a worker-to-worker case. That's work comp.
Yeah.
And that's, you're between your employer and your employee.
Yeah.
Think about the third party that might be involved. Who is the person in a car who isn't covered by work comp? That is a general liability coverage, so.
Your delivery person, perhaps?
Could be a delivery person. It could be any other innocent bystander who gets hurt. That's the general liability. And general liability could also cover work that is done improperly. It depends on the terms.
Breaking the water thing.
Yeah. Consequential damages to third parties.
Three quarters of the way done in your project.
But think of the employee, think of the work comp covering a statutory mandate for an employee.
It's not burning you, is it?
It doesn't extend. And that's where the general.
Got red there, didn't you?
You did.
I'm probably oversimplifying that, but I think that's probably easier than the same thing.
Any additional questions, comments that have been made already? Sounds like you're ready for the vote. Okay, can you restate the motion that's on the table?
Michael, Cootie made a motion to accept Mr. Hoffman's recommendation to go with the owner-controlled insurance program. It was seconded by Rich Apshan.
Okay. So the question's on the OSIP. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I prefer the CSIP.
Okay. So you're in it?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, Jason.
Good job, Jason.
It's a lot of information to get through. Nice job. Thank you.
It's one of the hundred things you'll have to manage.
Absolutely. Yep, good information. One other item under hold business, Dr. Linska.
Yes, we have, for the filing dates for the Board of Education, candidates will open on December 12 here of 2017, and will close on, the last day for candidate filing is January 16 of 2018. So this December 12 of '17 is the first day for candidate filing, first day, and the last day is January 16. Here for the filing dates.
Do we have a list of days between that, that the office is open because it's only required to accept candidate filings when school is in session?
We will have that.
I have it. It's not been approved by Dr. Linska, but I do have it typed and ready.
Okay.
I can share a draft with you if you'd like.
Okay. Well, I think that'd be good for any media.
You.
Maybe you fill up.
You fill up.
What we'll look at. Everybody else is gone.
I'd like, okay, then we can send to you, and you can send out. Absolutely.
So that'll be forthcoming.
Thank you.
Okay. You need action on that, or I'm trying to recall.
I don't believe so. This is set in Missouri.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Just for FYI.
It's not like we're going to change it.